She. He said, why I you don't have to kind of grant that.
All right, ready to start?
It is six P M on January twenty sixth, and I'm called as Lacey C Council work session to order. We do have one amendment to agenda. Like to add the amendment to talk about well sourced number six property acquisition at the the end of our agenda, but that can again motion to approve the amended agenda.
Move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
And seconded, is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed that that motion unanimously carries have an approved amended agenda? First up on our amended agenda is the I L A Regional Housing Council. Rick.
Actually, I'm gonna turn it over to Brian, who will provide a presentation on what's the proposed amendments to the I L A. The housing council.
One second till things up here. All right. Good evening, council. Thanks for having me here tonight in front of you is a draft amendment to an interlocal agreement regarding the regional housing council. So tonight I'll go over a little bit of background and talk about the amendments itself, and then turn over to you for questions and any suggested amendments before it goes back to the regional housing council. So some background back essentially two years ago, almost to the date, the original interlocal agreement was executed establishing the regional housing council, which we call the R H C for short. The purpose of the R H C was first of all leveraging resources through policies and projects related to safe and affordable housing and establishing procedures for dispersing housing funds and throughout Thurston County. One thing it did also do is dissolved an existing, well, actually two existing boards, one, the Health and Human Services Council, and the second was the Community Investment Partnership, both of which were kind of precursors to the R H C that were involved in discharging funds that would come through Thurston County. Back on April thirtieth of that year, the first amendment was was completed that executed clarifying how jurisdictions would manage and make decisions on House Bill fourteen oh six funds. So to mention, this is the second interlocal agreement. So that was the first amendment back in April thirty of twenty twenty one. A year ago to the date, January twenty six, twenty twenty two, the Thurston County Board of Commissioners had passed an ordinance authorizing a one tenth of one percent sales tax to establish a home fund. This is important because this is part of the amendment that's coming in front of you tonight. Second part of this is this last December, there was an agreement signed between Thurston County and Olympia combining their home fund. So this is a reminder, Olympia previously had a home fund, Thurston County established their own. This December nineteenth agreement did consolidate the two. And so that needs to be rectified through the the second amendment to the I L A that's in front of you tonight. Another thing that it did do is it set a ninety day clock for the this amendments that's in front of you to be approved by the partner jurisdictions, which means coming up here end of of February. So as I mentioned, the the purpose of this amendment is to, first of all, recognize the consolidation of the Thurston County and Olympia Home Fund. So it will now be a combined home fund. It will also establish the administrative procedures for the use of these combined funds. So now we have two home funds combining into one, and it will establish procedures for how to do that. First of all, in doing that, it does establish two separate advisory boards that provide assistance to the R H C in making decisions. The first is called the Affordable Housing Advisory Board. The purpose of that is a board is to provide information and funding recommendations on affordable housing projects. And the second, the homeless services advisory board is really related to providing recommendations and and funding recommendations on homeless services in the community. The our the interlocal agreement does specify that the advisory boards include community members as well as private sector representation and should include, does the advisory board charter, which is a part, a separate document, not a part of the I L A, but does oversee the the establishment of these advisory boards states that these should include community reps from each jurisdiction. And as a reminder, as I mentioned, the boards do make recommendations on capital funding projects to the R H C. So the way the funding works is there'll be application through the R H C. Those R H C applications will be then sent through these advisory boards for recommendations to come back to the R H C.
Ryan, do you want questions as you go or you want them at the end?
Anytime, it's fine.
I have some serious concerns with this part of it right here. Is there any more definition as to who will make up these two advisory boards?
I brought up the same question.
Because unless that spelled out, I could not possibly vote for this I L A.
The 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 I L A is a fairly straightforward language with, you know, community representation and private sector and the idea.
Not straightforward.
I guess it's simple, probably the first one, but the the idea behind that is these advisory boards will be made up of subject matter experts that include people from financial, real estate, development, community at large, as well as service providers or low income housing providers. The charter, which is a document that's established through the R H C to create, this is what the boards are going to look like, how they're going to function, they're basically their their procedures.
And who has been created yet, the charter?
There's there's a, yes, those charters been, are they approved or drafted at this point?
I think there's still a draft.
There's still a draft.
They spell out specifically?
They do. They do spell out specifically.
Get them? Because again, I there's, I could not possibly support this without knowing the details of that.
Question I had was where should it be? Should it be in this I L A? Where should it be in the charter? And they said, well, we're, are we going to be covering it in the charter? So.
I'm fine with it being in the charter, but I've not seen a charter. So I I want to see specifically because, you know, should include these people is not a guarantee that it will, and I don't want to see advisory boards that are made up of all of from the nonprofits who are going to be the ones who benefit from these dollars.
I think that is spelled out, though.
It is. It is addressed in the charter. We can get you a copy of the draft charter, and especially before it becomes before, you know, formal action, make sure you have that information.
Appreciate that.
And we can follow up with that and.
We had a pretty good discussion about that.
Yeah, and all along letting there have been, you know, concerns that we don't replicate what in the bad old days was a direct.
Kind of what that looks like, though. That's why I need to see the charter.
Yeah, no, yeah, I hear what you're saying, but I we're we're being pretty thoughtful about that. So, yeah.
And one other thing, too, came through the conversations and development of this this new structure is, you may recall in the past, there was talk about ex official members at the R H C table and whether it be hat or setting or experts, and that's actually this amendment refine that to be the chairs of the two advisory boards. And that and that way it's not a specific group, it's somebody representing the advisory boards and has and creates that.
Move on. I just have one more, well, two more slides, but one more with content. Continue on, it does allow the the amendment does allow for the lead agency, in this case Thurston County, to provide funds to a partner jurisdiction on specific R H C approved tasks. So it does allow for some reimbursement. You know, the city of Lacey was to take on certain things. We can be reimbursed for our time through some dollars there. It does allow for the revisiting of the role of lead agency and fiscal agent every five years. So as a reminder, Thurston County is the lead agency and fiscal agent, but if for some reason somebody else wanted to take on those roles and responsibilities, that could be done. And then the final issue here is that it does provide specific language regarding the use of those fourteen oh six funds. So as as a reminder, fourteen oh six funds are are collected and pooled and and basically given to the R H C to be able to distribute. This does allow for a streamlining of the approval process for the R H C to make decisions regarding the combined use of those funds. Previously, those funds were required to come back and be authorized by the individual council that provided them. The other advantage of this amendment is that it establishes a competitive process where the partners in the R H C may request funding for local projects consistent with funding priorities. So, for example, if the R H C does not use all of Lacey's fourteen oh six funds, we could actually go back through a competitive process and say, hey, we've got a a project that qualifies. We would apply back on an annual basis for those fourteen oh six funds to be used for a Lacey project.
And one advantage of that new language is instead of requesting just the Lacey portion or Tomer question, the Tomer portion, you have the opportunity to request for the pooled account as well.
So here's the last slide, which is obviously been already discussing, but providing feedback tonight on the proposed amendment to the interlocal agreement. And this will be for your formal consideration at a regular meeting in February, and I believe that's February sixteenth, middle of February. So with that, be happy to answer any other questions or take any other feedback.
And it's that one little thing on context and timing, the regional housing council met last night, they reviewed this again, and now they're each members are taken to their respective councils. So that process is in going. So this conversation tonight is this, is some feedback, answer questions, and then if there's things that we we need to communicate it quickly back to the regional table, if there are any any concerns or suggestions.
This is a lead agency administrative fee of twenty percent apply in this situation. It's ten percent, but yes.
It depends on the funding source.
Yeah.
So you didn't cover it in your vision, Ryan, but in reading all of this, I also have some questions about the makeup. So one of the things I read there was that Olympia would one third of the representatives on these two advisory boards would have to be from Olympia. And I understand that's because the home fund money.
Right.
What percentage of the total home fund money is Olympia's money? Is it a third?
It's it's close to a third. Yeah.
It really is.
It's Lacey will be second.
Right. It's just around a million, and I think the total combined fund, and so there.
Total minus, what, about four million?
Yep.
And how much of that is Olympia then?
Just under a million or or just over a million.
Just under a million, you wouldn't get him a third.
It's it's about just over a million.
And that's a, that's an estimate. Thurston County's is based on sales tax dollars, so that'll always fluctuate.
Sure, sure. I'm just wondering why, you know, I mean, we're we're not that far behind. We'd obviously be the second, and we're not getting some specific percentage. Why? Why are they getting a third of the the votes on this, on these committees?
Drive from their specifically having that home fund already established and merging it to the regional. And then, of course, the county perspective is it's a county home fund, even though a lot of collections countywide, including from Tomater, Lacey, as well as, you know, surrounding areas or growth areas. But it's the county. So that's that's kind of the the difference.
It's Olympia wanting to make sure they have more control as they try to do with everything. Okay.
I mean, the things you have to remember, these are just the advisory advisory boards, you know, it'll come to the the full council for.
I won't come to this, but nothing will come to this council anymore under this. The fourteen oh six money doesn't come back for us under this amendment.
That's true.
The R H C has a final comment, final decision.
Danny's point is Olympia gives one vote at the table.
I understand, but a third of the votes on the advisory.
But, you know, it was also, I I had this discussion, I had this discussion last night with R H C, and I I was reminded that the, you know, the majority of the services that are being provided are down in Olympia as well. And so they have a major impact on it, and there also been, I know, the experiencing the majority of the.
I can I can live with that part. I mean, I can live with that part as long as there are a third of the money, then I don't have a big issue with that. But I I think that other part, though, is critical. I really need to see that charter and know exactly. And I hope it spells it out in there pretty clearly, because that's going to be really important in the makeup of those council committees.
I'm glad to see that there's going to be a competitive process to do something with any over amounts of funds. Do we know what that process is going to look like yet? So I it sounds as if it's maybe similar to the C B G, C B D G funding model, like test for viability, like likelihood of getting matching funds, likelihood of actually being able to do something with the money before the money goes away. But do we have criteria yet on that competitive process?
That criteria is going to come out of the, you know, the priority establishing the five year homeless response plan, and it's also housing action policies. The process is going to look like, well, the R H C would approve the R F P, the council would approve the proposals, that would be put together, issued. And then as as projects are submitted for consideration, then there will be a scoring system conducted by the advisory boards. And then that will be presented to the regional housing council, and then the regional housing council would make a recommendation to the board of county commissioners on what projects to fund, how to disperse those funds or break up those funds. So it's very typical R F P process in these type of situations. Like similar what we do with transportation.
Yep. Scoring bids.
Yeah. So there's going to be a a scoring system, rating system, so let's say a a a true, this will be a background to the information that the advisory boards, as well as the regional council would have to consider.
But anchored to our homeless response plans at the county level. That's cool. Thanks.
All right. So I here to need to do a copy of the charter to the council review, and that's primary, the primary concern is how that representation shared around the around the jurisdictions. Okay. Thank you.
So next up is the procurement.
The mayor council members.
This is regarding ordinance sixteen thirty five. And back in March of twenty twenty two, House Bill seventeen ninety nine was passed by Washington State Legislature. And it's requiring that the diversion of organic materials away from landfills and towards food rescue programs and organic management facilities. The intent is to reduce organic materials from entering landfills by seventy five percent by the year twenty thirty and reducing methane gas, which is a greenhouse gas. So part seven of House Bill seventeen ninety nine requires that all cities with curbside organic collection services, as well as cities with a population of twenty five thousand or more, comply and adopt to a compost procurement ordinance to implement to implement R C W forty three nineteen A dot one twenty, which is titled the use of compost products in projects. And it states that when planning government funded projects for solicitation and review bids for such projects, all state agencies and local governments shall consider whether compost products can be utilized in the project. Therefore, the city or its contractors shall plan to utilize compost products in the following categories. First one is land landscaping projects. Second one is construction and post construction soil amendments. The third is the application to prevent soil erosion, filters, stormwater runoff, promote vegetation growth, and improve the stability and longevity of roadways. And the last is low impact development and green infrastructures to filter pollutants or keep water on site or boat. This ordinance establishes a compost procurement policy for the city of Lacey and therefore conforms to state law. This ordinance would be some similar to ordinances that have already been passed by the city of Tomater and the city of Olympia.
Um, so this is basically setting up our an ordinance that then will, the city is now, will they have to contract with a compost? It's one of the pick up or compost?
No, it's. When it is, when we go out to bid, that we must consider a company that has or or is using compost materials.
Okay.
Instead of non, non recycled.
So must consider them in what way though? Like, do they get preferential? In, are they?
It does say that.
I was not trying to understand that.
Yeah, it does say that we can give them a preferential treatment if they use such materials.
Can, but don't have to.
Correct. If they meet, if there's four criterias that we don't have, if it's, they can't give it to us on time. If it's cost too much, if it doesn't apply to state or federal health department standards. And the other one is banking on the fourth one, but it's something along those lines, that if it delays the project, that we don't have to go with them, and if they're not the lowest bidder.
So. So think of a big growth project where you have landscape strip, so you use compost there. Sure. So the the contractor, we will write in the contract specifications, the criteria under which this would be bid, that the contractor will have to meet. So this item would not be separated out, you know, I mean, we use unit price bidding. So this will be one of the line items that they have to submit a unit price on, but there will be criteria in terms of how far away. You know, I mean, limits on how far away they'd have to haul it, cost, meeting the specification. And and again, remember that this, the intent of utilizing these materials is to reduce landfill material, which reduces methane, but the haul, the longer you haul material with your diesel truck, you're also, you know, have the same effect. So there's, 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 but that will be, those details will be written into the contracts.
Okay, okay, I understand now.
So I, just real quick, if 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 this line item causes them to increase their bid, which makes them less competitive, do they have a gripe against us?
No, because all bidders will have the same criteria.
Criteria. Okay. But Lacey, we we currently don't have curbside organic collection.
No, no, just. Clean green.
Yeah.
But you can put food waste in the yard waste.
Oh.
Containers.
Oh, but it's yard waste. Go ahead, Lenny.
So.
You're not going to throw stick bombs and stuff like that.
So there was another part to this when I was reading it regarding a strategy to inform residents that I saw as part of this ordinance as well.
Yeah, there's a, there also is a strategy to inform residents about composting, or about the city's use of composting materials.
What is the, what is the gist of that? What is the plan for that? And what is, what are we looking at? I mean, I see no disadvantages, but I'm I'm here, when it says advantages and disadvantages, but what about costs? I mean, there's, there's got to be some cost to the city for doing this.
Yeah, I'd say that the cost will be minimal, because you're not talking a lot of product or a lot of places this can be applied to. And then as far as the public outreach, public, you know, when we get to that point, public works can meet with public affairs, my assumption is we'll probably, you know, use social media and and that side, you know.
Okay.
Say, hey, we compost.
Oh, yeah, we're using compost products on this.
So that's all that they're talking about doing then. Okay.
Okay.
And if the cost's like too high. I just saw it, I think somebody added to the monthly wire, like when we get to Waterville, and it's in there.
Right, which is great if that's as, yeah, as simple as that. I just, I didn't want to see this picking up. I mean, obviously, we're which always drives me crazy, we're going to be voting on something where we have zero choice, because the state already passed the law. And now we have to, which to me makes no sense. There's no reason this should be coming before this council for a vote, because it's already been done. The state already voted on it. Why are we voting on something they voted on? And it's not the only time this happens, obviously, but it annoys me every time it happens. It's obviously a vote, and if you're told how you have to vote, that's not a vote.
Yeah, right. And so did they, you know, did the state say anything about, you know, you know, the the methane portion amounts based on this legislation and and the expectation?
I mean, this, obviously, this is legislation the House has always, you know, very long, you know, it it was quantified, but the overall goal, you know, as noted in the staff board is reduce landfill organics by seventy five percent by twenty thirty. So, you know, they have that goal in in terms of how much methane that equates to, I I.
It seems like there should be some incentive for people to compost, so you can get the compost material that they can use.
Doesn't affect residents.
No.
This is for public words. Why isn't there a connection point? Because you got yard waste coming out.
This is still a good thing mandated or not, you know, maybe commercial real estate or residential, but I will say this is a good segue to, again, just put up the council's radar that the county went out to bid a little over a year ago, almost two years ago, on their contract. Ours renews every day at midnight. The county saved two million dollars every year in what it is, that the contract that came in second, the second place bid was two million more. So really, they save four million dollars a year for the first ten years. That's forty million dollars. We need to seriously look at giving notice on our contract and doing the competitive bid. We have four business owners here on this council, and it's an avenue that we can tremendously save ratepayers, I I believe.
I know you've been preaching for that for a long time. I think the other maybe easier thing to do is if you, if we work with Olympia to look at their system instead of having to reinvent a new system, but.
Well, no, no, I agree.
Ongoing conversation.
Regardless of who it's with, or, I mean, it's going to benefit everybody and and save money and.
A lot of people. Is there, is there any other questions about this compost procurement?
Before Marcus leaves, I want to introduce Marcus. He is our public works management.
Hi, Marcus.
Tom Tom Mateer was in his position for years. He retired this last fall. So we were very fortunate to be able to get Marcus. It's it's a good news, bad news. It was, or great news, bad news. It was great news for public works, bad news for Troy. Sorry. So he has a phenomenal, you know, business background, and then also the internal institutional knowledge, both utility billing and finance, which will make him a great asset.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Appreciate.
And depending on your likes, he's a big time forty Niners fan.
So.
Thanks, Marcus.
Next up is our, our utility C I Ps.
So good evening, council. It's been a long time, but before I've been for you guys. But I, my name's Terry O'Neil. I'm the senior utility engineer within the public works department in water resources. And I appreciate this opportunity to go over our C I P capital improved projects for utilities for two thousand twenty two and two thousand twenty three. We have over a hundred projects. And I combined some of them.
Thank you.
You always hear the story, you know, let's make a long story short. I, this is a very long story, and I'll keep it as short as possible. However, I I would warn you, there's about a hundred slides. But I mean, give them. So. Did I share screen? I I think I go that first, yeah.
Thanks, Laura. There you go.
Okay, so first of all, just introduce you to the water service area. Water service area is, we serve mostly in the U G A, but there's a large number of water systems that are within the same vicinity of ours. So any of the areas, see in blue, is actually our water system. Outside the U G A, we also serve in this quality area. So wastewater system is serves everything in the U G A, and of course, the city, which is there. So city limits in blue there and in gray, you have U G A. So next I'm going to go through, start out with our overall system projects. And so one of the things we put together this year as part of our two thousand twenty two, twenty three budget request is a project brief. And so you'll see here on left.
Terry, before you go further.
Right.
Then you minimize the screen there.
Left, you minimize. There you go.
Yeah.
And slide it up to the upper bottom. There you go.
Okay. So as part of the budget request, we put together these briefs for each one of the projects. I'll walk you quite quickly through one of them. So what we have up here is the title of the project. It gives a brief, brief description of what the project is. It has a schedule. In this case, it only has pre design. There's also design and construction in some of the projects. Color coding, some of the projects are just water, which would be blue, stormwater, we just colored yellow. Wastewater green, and so if there's like multiple utilities, there would be multiple colors. Just a quick reference. We input the total projected cost of the projects, you know, some projects were in one year, some run seven years. And then we start out with our budget for two thousand Um, and then we start out with our budget for two thousand and twenty-three, and this is what was approved, uh, by council. And oftentimes we'll have carryovers and amendments, and this is one way that we can track about where we are in the budget project. Then it gives us a good idea about who is in there. We have a project manager, fund code. This is where Troy and I can keep track of where actually things go, at least pretend. And we can, and down at the very bottom is the consultant.
So Terry builds these sheets for a budget process. So, you know, we, you know, the departments meet with the Finance Director, City Manager in August of every year. So all of the capital projects that funding is requested for, Terry builds these sheets, so.
It was build a budget.
Yeah. I'd like to say she built them specifically for you all tonight.
This is part of the budget process guide.
Yeah.
And the engineers did a wonderful job. They were involved with some of their projects. So this is the stormwater design manual update, and, um, it was actually completed recently. So we always put a nominal amount when there's, uh, intent, potential for going to next year. Uh, water comp plan, the water comp plan is almost complete. Plan is to present this to council next month, February, and then we'll be sent to Department of Health for a six-month review and update the plan after that, and council, the intent would be for council to approve by the end of this year, wrap that one up. We are starting on the wastewater comp plan. The last one here was done back in two thousand fifteen. And so we're just going to start moving along, along on this one, take a couple of years. Reclaiming water complan, well, this has been a moving target. We started this back in two thousand sixteen and trying to get a handle on how much reclaiming water we have, what, what use, uh, what we're using it for, and how much is available or other, um, uses. Stormwater management action planning, this is a new program that's mandated by Department of Ecology. Art flash, one of the things for art flashes, we put together specifications for all of our projects so that we use for template for any of the projects. This is something new we put together is our well program. So we have twenty wells, and the city manages, needs a way, method to manage the wells and the water rights. So one of the things we did, number one, is put together specifications so we could have a standardization about how we actually rehab a well. We rehab two wells a year. Um, sometimes, uh, some wells receive more rehabbing more often than others. And so at the second phase, what we're doing is putting together a, uh, enhanced planning and forecast, forecasting tool. And so this is one step, there'll be a one-stop shop place for information, and then also forecast when a well just need to be rehabbed or replaced. Two thousand and twenty-three overlay utility improvements, one of the things we like to do is when there's, um, when the roads are going in, if there's improvements, this is an opportune time to actually cost share and make sure also that we have mains that need to be replaced that, uh, that they're not in there digging a couple of years later. Two thousand and twenty-three design annual manhole rehab, all, all facilities need, um, improvements and rehabbing. So we also have valves. Those also, we install new valves or replace ones that are needing replacement along with wastewater valves. Lift station awnings, this is a new program that we started out. Any of the old lift stations, they just had, uh, these cabinets here, you can see. And, um, there was, so the shops out there, all, all seasons, rain, snow, and, and they're looking in these cabinets, it can be dark at night. And there's nothing that between them and the weather. So the awnings are being installed, and you can see this right now, this is the years, uh, uh, where the locations have been, um, installed the awnings.
The awnings are lit?
We actually have lighting at the sites.
So, so, I, I see that this is include our latest update of the city, um, going down a little bit farther to hit the rack, but, um, how are things going with the artwork with working with the county on the one, uh, stormwater?
Oh, yeah, no, we own it now, so it's our, it's our baby, but, um, you know, we're, you know.
Are, are we, are we still cost sharing on it, or?
No, that one, that was a one-year period, and that one year expired. So it's, we own it, and.
But, but the outfall, didn't we, there's some, some sort of agreement that they still manage the outfall?
Yes, so basic, the way their agreement was written is at this, you know, when the pipe leaves the site, when the pipe leaves the city limits, their responsibility, they're responsible for the pipe.
Sure.
You know, from, from where it leaves the city limits to the outfall.
But so, so far so good, and I haven't had any, because we've had a lot of rain.
Yeah, I mean, there haven't been any issues like related to, to flooding or that, but we do have upgrades that we'll have to make to.
That, yeah.
To those, uh, well, basically to, to the stormwater lift stations.
Yeah, stormwater station. Yeah, that's crazy.
Okay, so then another thing we do is we put funds in each year for miscellaneous projects. Things pop up. Um, yes, say Thurston County has something coming through that we weren't aware of. Again, we want to take advantage of that opportunity and also coordinate with, with them on any projects. Um, some of these are some of the projects we have done in the past, uh, with Meridian, um, Hogan Bay, the two thousand eighteen overlay. One time we thought, okay, there's no, nothing that needs to be done, find out in, in the next year. Oh, wait a second. There's, these are improvements need to be completed. So I'm going to start out showing, uh, I broke out these projects into different areas of the city. And so what you have here is this is north of I five and, um, east Department Road. Going north to south. So part of the water rights requirements, we needed to actually study what's happening in the aquifer. Um, this was part of the requirements when we obtained the Marvin Road, the Meridian, and the Hawks Prairie well water rights along with, um, those, those are the requirements for those areas. So on Source Seventeen, which is a beach crest wells, which is very north, um, up into this area here, we have low pH water, and as part of the requirements from Department of Health, we have to increase the pH. So this is one of three sites where we're increasing the pH of the water. It recently just, um, was awarded, um, by council. So. Marvin Road, uh, production well is located at Forty-first Avenue and Marvin Road. This is kitty corner from our treatment facility, the sister stamp pipe. This is one of the new wells that will be going in. Uh, this, that is for this year. Oxbury Sister Stamp Pipe, that is complete, has been put online. We could be moving forward with the, um, the rehab. So as part of this project, we actually had to go through wetland to fence off. And so there's a requirement that we actually monitor the wetland mitigation. In addition, we have needed SCADA upgrades, which means we basically needed to make improvements to how our facility operates. You got a new facility online, everything has to work together. So the Hawksbury Reservoir Rehab, we started on that. This, uh, project along with the Hawksbury, Oxbury Sister Stamp Pipe has, is going to cost over sixteen point three million dollars. Source Twenty-nine, we also call the Betty Well, is located at Thirty-first Avenue, northeast of Marvin Road. And this is just one of the wells that we're rehabbing. That produces about a thousand gallons per minute. Reading Capus Production Well, this is also a new well, um, similar to the Marvin Road one that we will be installing the new well for future water needs in the city. Lift Station Nineteen Replacement, the Lift Station Nineteen, it was out a small little area, as you can see over here, and then we need to, to rehab it, put new equipment in, it's way too small, and so we have the new site where we're, we're building it. Um, one of the things with the lack of materials, this contract was suspended for six months. And, um, it's going to be starting up just, um, start of February. Lift Station Forty-nine, we have a need for additional land, so when the surrounding land is actually, uh, developed, that's when we'll, uh, obtain some property.
Or you have something right there?
Yeah, so Lift Station Forty-nine is right here. But due to the size of the lift station and other, uh, facilities on site, there's limited capacity for when shop does any kind of operation and maintenance. So there would be basically additional land that we'll work with the developer on.
We want a little bit of distance between the lift station and whether it's a residential unit or multifamily.
Sure.
Just a little bit of space.
That's what that is, zone right there, right? And, and that's a kind of a weird elevation right through there.
It drops significantly.
Yeah, right.
The area from Britton Parkway is pretty much just level with Britton Parkway that.
Drops.
Then it drops down into a side hill, down to the wetland area, down to the well. It's all shady, you know, as a steep grade going down to the.
But north of Britton Parkway, that's, uh, still zone multifamily right through there?
Yes.
At the station nineteen, we also had cost connection control that we need to make upgrades on mainly to ensure that the potable water is not, you know, any type of contamination from the wastewater. And now moving on to the area south of I five and continuing, uh, east Department Road. For these projects, one of the projects we have there is along Martin Way, Gels Drive, the whole street. That wastewater main is owned by the city, and just to the west of that is owned by a lot. And there's been a lot of growth in, in the city, as you're all aware. And so we need to see how much wastewater is actually going through the line. Based upon our projections, that may, it may be a capacity, and so we need to make more upgrades. Lift Station Eleven Replacement, this, uh, station is a real small, uh, station, but there's, it's been degrading and needs, uh, upgrades made. And that's one of the things throughout this presentation, you're seeing a lot of lift stations. Um, they're just all ending at their, at the end of the life expectancy.
Carpenter Road and.
Yeah, so this.
All the glen in there?
So please, so you got Carpenter Road and just.
The orientation is north there, you can see, so there's improvements, you know, that, that an annexation is just to the north.
Okay, that's, uh, that's.
Two thousand twenty-two overlay utilities, this is another project we're partnering with the transportation. Lift Station Thirty-four pump replacement, just an upgrade for a pump. Midrona Connection to Three Thirty-seven Pressure Zone. So we have three wells located just, um, north of Pacific Avenue. I don't know, okay. Um, just north of Pacific Avenue and, and east of Marvin Road. These are our large wells that pump into whatever pressure zones. The intent is to actually send some of the water directly into a lower pressure zone to make it more efficient in how we deliver water. That, they, these wells also have low pH water, so this is another project we're working on to increase the pH. Just south of that, so going back to that, I'm looking for my, oh, there we go. So these are the wells again, Tori and Takiu. We have a gap in our water system right here. The main ends in this location, it ends in this location. So we're basically just connecting them and then upgrading some of the mains. And as part of the county, the county is making upgrades along Marvin Road, and they're actually, there's a railroad crossing right on Union Mills Road southeast there. So with the changes in grade, we're having to relocate our water vein and also do some things with sewer. Union Mills Reservoir, that's, uh, all, one of our older reservoirs, and like, everything needs maintenance, and so we're recording it, and we also making other improvements, um, to orientate you. Who's missing the zero? Um, there's the box store right there, so this is south of Silicon.
The trains still come to that box store?
I understand it's been a long, long time.
We can do the, the minimum.
Yeah, I mean, we talked the railroad frequently, I mean, obviously, when that's abandoned, then the willing trail will be extended through there.
I know.
But there's been no commitment to abandon that railroad, so, uh, we keep checking.
Yeah. That would be nice to extend it down.
So this is another well we're rehabbing, Source Twenty-seven, which is, uh, just south of Benton Drive. There's street neighborhoods, uh, Spruce Street, Ninth Avenue, Lake Forest Neighborhood, that the ma- mains may be upsized. And so we, we combine those projects and those sites into one project. Mullen Step Main Improvement, there's pressure problems, um, associated that. So we're going to be upsizing the main and also making some improvements at lift stations. So you can see that's Mullen Road, which is right east of Carpenter Road there.
So, a decent size one over there that goes under Mullen Road that, that, that's.
That's the swamp.
That's the swamp, right?
That's the swamp, that has some logs.
Yeah, that's, that's the low spot that always floods, right?
With the, the trussel above it.
Yeah. The depth.
Yeah, did you see that?
The twenty, the, the trucks?
Yeah.
It should have like teeth on it. That you can still hit it, and you're, you know.
Another well we're rehabbing is Source Twenty-four, which this is, um, located, if you take a look, you know, or unless you're still east of Silicon Road and north of Mullen Road. I'll move over to the west side of Carpenter Road, and although we're on north of Lacey Boulevard. Homey Park, we're making, uh, we're actually, this is the septic to sewer. And, um, that's going to be in design in this year and constructed next year. Lift Station Twenty-three is at, uh, that is life expectancy, and so this is, uh, located next to Pleasant Gate Blade Elementary, and we're going to be moving that lift station to a new site, working with developer on that. In addition, there, with the upgrade, we're able to abandon the station Twenty-seven. West Minister Pond Rehab, stormwater facilities need rehabbing also. Old Street Extensions, um, so mains are going to be upgraded and, and additional ones installed as part of the extension of the street.
What's that going to happen?
Next, twenty twenty-four is the.
Oh, wow.
So.
That's been a long time, my entire life. Seriously.
Actually, there's, um, tree removal going on in the extension area, I think this week, maybe next week.
So the railway stuff is.
Oh, yeah. We had it for a bit.
So we're punching north from Sixth Avenue. It's going to tie into Fifteenth.
Yeah, tying to Fifteenth.
Yeah. And that, that will become a T intersection there where the, it'll be a one-way stop. So Sixth Avenue will stop, College will flow through.
Okay. Now, now you have to go through that neighborhood.
Right.
I do it forever.
Right.
County project, the intersection of, of Fifteenth and Slater Kenny is a county project.
Well, that'll be handy.
You, you're the county project at Fifteenth and Thirteenth?
Right.
That's still on track, too?
I don't know the timing of that.
Okay.
Yeah.
So part of that project, we're also abandoning the station Twenty-seven. Lift Station Seventeen Rehab is another station we're rehabbing. And you can see it's, uh, south, uh, sorry, it's, uh, east of College Street and north of Martin Way.
So.
It's CC.
So that sits down in a whole next to the primary, and this is situation where, uh, one of our big storms, you know, where we were sending, you know, trucks out, you know, everything was, power was down, so, you know, we're sending, uh, at that time, it was. power was down, so you know, we're sending uh at that time, it was eight ten, we were there sending crews out to pump them down. Yeah, it went in there, started pumping it down, and a couple of trees came across the then we had to send another crew out there to change those, to cut them out, so they.
Good times.
Yeah, it's beautiful place to have a picnic, if you don't mind sitting next to the station. Uh Woodland Creek Oil Water separator is not functioning, it clogs repeatedly, so we're gonna be replacing that.
That's just with all the oil and stuff coming out of households and extra collecting it there.
It's streets.
Streets.
Yeah, it's a storm water.
Oh, storm water, yeah.
Yes.
So part of the uh two thousand twenty-two manhole rehab went along Seventh Avenue and Lacy Street.
What are you doing with Facebook?
We we actually already did it.
Oh, that's right, all the crews out now.
Yeah, so that's what they were doing out there, they're rehabbing that. A sewer decamp facility and a stormwater decamp facility, there needs to be improvements for the stormwater, and then the sewer also has a a small facility out there that slants in the wrong directions, that's why I can explain it. And so they're gonna fix that and put a roof over the top. The station twelve abandonment, this project's also just completed, we uh eliminated the station twelve and put a main down through those property in here and popped out at Carpenter Road southeast, just south of Martin Way. No, you know, another lift station eliminated eliminated and on less maintenance.
They need to do that for the community that was coming in there, too?
Oh, excuse me?
The there's a bunch of multifamily coming in right there. Do they attach to that main or?
Yeah, they will, but it was not a improvement didn't benefit them so much as um there was this overall benefit to the wastewater system.
This is either upgrade the lift station or abandon it. We found a way to abandon it. But it wasn't future development, pardon me.
Source seven ATAC property purchase, this is for a new uh well. Your book access and miscellaneous improvements, we have a wastewater facility on that site, and we need better access to it. Next uh group projects between Lacy Boulevard and north of Mullen and Thirty-seventh Avenue southeast. Very in black. So Woodland Creek Community Park, we're restoring some of the habitat. That is just south of the creek here where there's the bridge located. People I know a lot of times walk down to the creek and it's eroded pretty badly.
I think I tore up some blackberry vines there on Monday.
Yeah. Do you remember how it gets, is it another culvert that attaches that to Woodland Creek? Is that underneath the um Civic Avenue? So that's a culvert, right?
Yeah, there's a culvert under Civic Avenue.
Hollow Street and Sixteenth Roundabout, we'll do water improvements with that project. Well, Club and uh Water Main is going out for advertisement and actually went out for advertising today, we're making improvements for the water system and then also the wastewater system. The station three replacement, the another lift station that needs uh replacing um is part of this project, we're also doing some stormwater improvements. Which, as you can see here, it's basically, it was an opportune time to actually pick up the stormwater improvements because it's right next to the lift station.
Yeah, just to the uh south of.
Just to the south there, yeah.
Chambers Lake Main abandonment, um there's about sixty-four hundred of uh difficult to access asbestos pipe. So we're gonna be abandoning some of the mains along with replacing them. Source six well have well rehab, this is another well we rehabbed, uh this is the well we keep rehabbing it. Um some wells need to be rehabbed more often than others to spend on the aquifer and along the well has been how long we've had the well. And there's also new water rights that we have not put to use, beneficial use, um so we're in the process of working on obtaining additional uh property associated with that. Shud Hill Reservoir Pre-Design, this reservoir is a slab upgrade, I mean, there is no footings. Um so we're seeing if we can take it offline. Wait for stormwater installation as uh just some waste uh stormwater mains to be cared of, um an area that does not infiltrate very well. Lift station six rehab, another well, another station I mean. So we have water main and uh stormwater that we're we're cleaning at the same time. This is a sewer line that we're replacing is just west of College Street southeast and on Thirty-second Lane. We're in the process of uh working with Grace Church uh purchasing the Ruddle Road store, uh land purchase for the Ruddle Road Stormwater Facility. Um that's just taking more time to discussing with them about the property. With land prices increasing.
Do we need all three parcels?
Maybe, maybe not, I'm just not sure what they want to sell. So our attorney Dave has been working with them. We just, we're getting to the point where we need to have them make a decision, do they want to surplus some of it and sell it to us?
Uh source one supplemental well, uh this is for source one has a lot of uh water that uh that we utilize in our system, so this is a replacement well uh future. West Side, another place where you have low pH water, so it's the third site we're putting a pH treatment facility.
So, you know, this Terry's described three so far up at Beach Crest, I've been growing in here, and if you so, yeah, those three projects combined are over twenty million dollars. And these weren't even in our CIP and in two thousand thirteen when we did the the water plan update, uh after the Flint, Michigan issue, um they tightened down on you know, they're let copper, um Lacy was right on the bubble, which made us, I mean, in a couple of locations, which made us, well, it required to do this work. So just to say, you can go along planning, requirements can be changed, and you can incur significant expense. So this uh, yeah, it's been a lot of time and effort put into these projects, planning, designing. Now they're moving forward to construction.
More operation maintenance and.
Yeah. So just a little under half the cost of a police station.
Okay, moving on to uh south of Mullen Road, this is the last area, uh so wrap it up with lift station twenty abandonment, this is another place, lift station, we will be able to abandon by adding some wastewater main in the development. Terry Call it a old reservoir, that I'm sure you guys are all familiar with that importance. And uh there you go, this is before they did the four of all the rebar that they were installed before they did four um a couple of weeks ago.
When are we looking for completion on this?
It's gonna be next year, two thousand twenty-four, I don't have the exact date.
Is it one big composite tank coming in there? Or are they?
So you have the bottom is uh the concrete and then the top is steel, yeah, composite. Uh source ten, uh we're putting a generator in there. Gives us more uh ability to pump wells when there's no power. Little little prairie sewer main, that main is almost flat. Um so we're gonna be looking at seeing how the best way to a, you know, maybe do something with it. That's why there's this, we're gonna do a study first and take a look at it, uh they clean it regularly. Capital City, of course, improvements, abandonments, uh that project's all done.
Well.
Seventeen point four million dollars.
That would, that funnel price tag.
Have we tested the water there since the improvements? Is it better than it was?
We're we're taking samples, but um I do not have the data, but I will. I'll find it for you.
Imagine it would take some time for.
Yeah, it will.
Change.
It will, but I don't know if we're seeing any indication at this point or not.
Yeah, because we finished construction of the east side in two thousand twenty-one and just recently can uh finished up the west side. So in that uh area, we have um I always lose this. There we go, um right here, we have source four. And that well was rehabbed.
That's the one that I think that you and I visited, yeah.
You mean that you hit with the golf ball?
Oh, that is a prime target area.
Drive is better, come on.
They're going out there or inside, running into it now.
I thought that was just a known obstacle.
We actually, we actually bid a hundred bucks, whoever hits it first.
So we're putting a supplemental well uh to utilize all the water. And just.
That's a low.
Yeah, so there's one of the more shallow one, just my piece, or Terry, you recall that depth sixty feet or so?
Yes.
It's less than a hundred, yeah.
Yeah.
So and just uh the very bottom here in the Horizon Point Development, there's lift station thirty-seven, and we're replacing the pump. And so before I hand this over to Pete, who's gonna talk about capital rates and expenditures, do you guys have any questions?
Lots of projects.
Lot of projects. And and you had, I mean, obviously you had dollar amount, I mean, you don't happen to have a total with all that was, did you?
We're all thinking.
Oh, you're asking me to memorize what my budget.
That was just the one.
I just kept on saying the consultant on the bottom, you're saying, yeah, the wrong business.
Did you have a question?
Yes.
The little berry?
Yes.
One, I gather that's on the north side of Yum Highway, between College and and Ruddle?
Yes.
Okay. Um, any idea how much traffic disruption that's going to cause?
Well, right now, we're not sure what we're gonna do for.
Oh, okay. It's not that far along.
Yeah, so it's, we're just studying it at this time, and I I believe we're in the parking lot, so it's more like disruption for Safeway and those kind of items, but.
Right.
Same question about the one on Willamette.
Okay.
Um where it is the, the lift, uh lift, lift station moving from one location to another. Uh and and there's a school, right? It moves by.
Oh, okay, so lift station twenty-three, oh, with the at the Pleasant Glade Elementary? Yeah, so what we're doing is moving that um to uh into a development, and so there's gonna be minute minimum disruption to the school. In fact.
Well, I think, I think you're referring to the station nineteen.
Am I?
Yeah, so, yeah, you said, uh, Willamette.
Oh, okay, okay, I'm sorry, um.
So, yeah.
So there is gonna be some disruption, there they, they are installing a manhole in the uh in Willamette. Uh but that's the only point um that they're gonna have any construction, right, and that road.
Other thing I noticed is that we um have quite a few um places we're abandoning, and so there's a big property there, what's the average size of, are are we talking small piece of property or is it parcels big enough to say? Put a home on?
Oh, the old lift stations, postage stamp.
Yeah.
We're in right of ways.
Yeah.
Uh it's very difficult for the crew to maintain it because they're either blocking traffic or um they're, you know, going in, out, in, out, out, just to get into it, so they're, no. I mean, you go back to the picnic idea.
Sure.
And some of those locations are in the middle without frontage or access, you know, the traditional access, we have access for.
Here's never, I can never tell what the actual size of the piece of property was on some of the things that we're abandoning. Any other questions? Next.
Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
So this is a follow-on. We anticipated you might have questions about schedule for the projects, and there was a rate increase and great studies that you took action on. How is it all working, we figured you might want to know. So if you didn't, well.
Pete only has fifty slides.
No, it wasn't. Okay, so what you heard Terry say was about supply chain disruption. COVID did a lot of damage, you probably know from your business uh aspects, but for us, it did a lot, we 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 bid projects and then the successful bidder comes in and says, oh, well, we can't get this for six months. How are we gonna do that? Do you suspend working days? How, so it just disrupts stuff in terms of the construction phase of that. But then we've also had difficulty in hiring staff. Um I don't know if you've noticed that in in your businesses, but that's the thing right now. Combination of a lot of factors, but hiring talented people who actually know how to do the job very challenging, right? You used to be able to fill like in a couple of months, you know, six months, a year. It's so when you don't have people sitting at the desk either doing the design themselves or managing consultants doing the design project language. So there have been delays. So what this picture, graph, or chart, whatever, is showing you is years twenty twenty through twenty twenty-five, so blue is the rate study. Uh whether it's, in this case, it's the water rate study. And then the um brown, uh twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two are actual amount of money spent, and then uh the forward years are our projections, so.
So we saved, so we saved a bunch of money and now we're gonna spend a bunch of money.
We said, bingo, a picture's worth a thousand words. So that's what's going on there, we we didn't do it when we said we thought we were gonna do, and we're gonna get to it later. So we've saved money, but yes, we're gonna be spending a bunch in the future. Uh wastewater uh isn't as bad, but yeah, you you can see that um what we thought we were gonna do hasn't been quite what we've gotten done. And stormwater, you notice, first of all, the the millions is like order of magnitude lower, because it's stormwater, right? You usually don't need pumps for stormwater and all that kind of complicated water treatment, right? Yeah, you just you just get it off the road and put it into a a small natural do-it-yourself treatment facility, but again, uh what we've actually gotten done versus, so more of that's getting pushed out in time. Okay, so this is just a review from uh the presentation, just a chumper, just a couple of slides from the presentation back last September. Yeah, about the or last September, September four, on the rate study. So what you'll recall, yeah, it's December four, so in twenty twenty-one, we had the mid-year increase for water of five percent, like a pause for that, and then going forward, we said it would be five and a quarter percent. And then the key thing to notice in this chart is uh the debt. So we had projected from the rate study, we would need eleven and a half million dollars of debt incurred this year. And then in twenty-five, twelve and a quarter, and then sixteen, three quarter, and twenty-seven. Going forward, I don't know what that is, that's, that is a finance director uh topic, but I know that we're not taking out eleven and a half million dollars in debt this year because we had reserves, we've spent the reserves, we haven't had the projects, we still have reserves. No need to take on debt yet, so the debt will be shifted out in time as well, since the projects were shifted out.
So those, Peter, those aren't cumulative, right, that's we're gonna spend eleven point five in.
Those are three separate.
Gotta pay down, and then we're gonna spend another twelve.
You you pay it out over twenty years, so basically they ladder.
Yeah, okay.
Pretty different. But so far, we we, do we have any idea when we're gonna have to take debt for the first time?
That's a great question, Mr. Mayor.
That's a great question, Mr. Mayor.
I like, I have all the time.
Now, we haven't really adjusted the models since the consultant put together this rate recommendation. Um, so we're really gonna have to recalibrate the timing of the projects and compare that to cash flow, but. As Pete said, certainly not two thousand twenty three, probably not two thousand twenty four. Um, Pete hasn't gotten to the wastewater slide yet, but wastewater has a less favorable cash position in water. So it could be sooner, in fact, I would definitely think it'd be sooner in sewer than it would be in water at this point.
Now, speaking of wastewater, here we go, so we had a five percent increase in twenty one. Excuse me, and then nine and a half going toward from there. And, uh, again, five and a quarter million debt in twenty three, and another million in, in twenty five is projected. But, again, it is, it'll happen sooner, Troy just said, but. Not this year, because projects have been a bit delayed.
But that's also funding our subject to soar.
Flush your toilets, the whole, the whole package, the nine and a half percent rates. It includes rebuilding that cash, so in the future, we can launch that program. Okay, so now what we're looking at is revenue. Okay, so what I'm not showing you is reserves that are in the font. I'm just showing you the cash. Second of all, these are my numbers, these are not Troy's numbers. So he didn't, he did not have time or hadn't even given the time to approve these. So do not memorize these numbers, don't think this is really true, this is.
It's not validated.
Non-accountants' guesstimate. Exactly, illustrative purposes only, but you can see because the projects. So that away. Shifted in time, like over the twenty to twenty two timeframe, it about balanced. Right, so we didn't pull down our cash reserves and water, it's good cash reserves. So then going into the, now going forward time, we can burn those reserves before we need the debt. That's what I'm trying to show you here.
Isn't it pretty difficult to figure out what the actual revenue is gonna be until we actually sell the water?
Um, it varies a little bit from, you know, cool summer, hot summer kind of years. But I think it is stable enough that you can get a pretty good idea. Uh, and again, for, for capital projects, we take like fifteen percent or so from the rates. Goes into the replacement. But then there's also some other much smaller amounts, taxes, interests and whatnot on accounts. And then there's the reserves that build up, and if we don't need it all for O and M, then that cash is available, which is what we have right now. And so then Troy is able to move that from the O and M over into the capital fund. So that's what we will do, spend our own money before we take out debt.
Will, will we even start regenerating reserves of it?
I would imagine someday. Reserves down to whatever you're comfortable with, cause if it's a crisis, you need cash, right? You can't be totally cash poor. But you bring that down and you, uh, do debt service and then assuming that this is like a, uh. A pig going through the python kind of a thing, we have a quiescent period, we don't have as many capital projects, and yes, you'd keep the rates where they are and. Build up your reserves again. Okay, with wastewater, um, you can see that we actually have been getting some projects done. So that burns up the reserves, but as Troy mentioned, our cash position there, our reserves there isn't as favorable, and then we have. Projects going forward. And then stormwater, yeah, there's, there's not much money needed, and there's lots of money available. Because we haven't done much, like, smallish projects.
So a lot of these are studies and things like that, and when they're not capital improvements and things like that, they're, they don't take as much money, so a lot of that's like the land, Ruddle Road land. Um, and then also construction projects that haven't moved forward, that are moving, gonna be moving forward in the near future.
So tell me that we're overcharging for stormwater?
Not necessarily, uh, there, there'll sometimes we.
Give you a better graph then.
This is a small snippet in time. And the point is simply to show you that your projects have shifted.
Your non-GAAP numbers.
You know, it will come to time in stormwater where we're gonna have significantly more expenditure down the road.
Yeah, I imagine so.
You imagine?
I hope so.
We should cut the rate in half.
That's like, when we, when we finally works up now with the church, that's like a million and a half or so, boom, that, that happens.
Okay. The requirements from the Department of Ecology continue to get more and more strict, which means it costs us more and more to meet it, and.
Sure.
You know, just by way of estimated expense versus real expense, I think the very first bar graph that Pete showed that showed. The estimated expenditures that were predicted when we did the rate forecast versus the actual, if you look at that period. You know, the, the period from twenty twenty one to twenty twenty five, I mean, yeah, the. The, the bars weren't even, but the total estimated expenditures over that period for water were like a hundred and two million. And based on what we spent so far and what we have a pretty, uh, you know. High probability of reaching based on, you know, like those expensive projects like the air ration. Truck cargo reservoir that are right there in the queue. You know, there's about a hundred and two million estimated, and we're, we're thinking we're gonna hit about eighty nine million, so, you know, we're running. You know, eighty eight percent or so of what was forecasted, which really is. Yeah, pretty close.
Yeah, so I look at this and I, I sit around looking at the numbers, you can burn through this really fast with one project.
Sure.
Just because.
And stormwater is obviously that, that number on the, on the.
Just because it's not on the same scale as the other ones, but it does look.
Any other questions on that portion?
No.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you. Okay.
Thank you. I have a question, how's Troy's blood pressure? So, our, our last agenda, I am, is this, uh, well-sourced six property acquisition, and I turn it over to Dave to. Fill us in on what's been going on about this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, uh, good evening, council members, um. I'm here today just to kind of foreshadow, uh, a potential. Um, future council agenda items, so well-source six is a. It was on the list of projects that Terry just went over, um, it's in, it's, 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 it's in, it's. Well, near Judd Hill, so right on Judd Street. Um, the well there that we have is not producing sufficient to perfect the water rights that we have. Um, a new well is needed, um, this new well must be located in close proximity. If you can, I think Guggins available, he's the city engineer, um, if you have any technical questions, he would be the person to ask, I'm just gonna kinda.
Need property in the vicinity.
Yeah, so we need property in the general vicinity, vicinity, um, city staff have explored. Um, options available and determined that, um, you are going to need to acquire property. Property that we own in the area is not gonna be sufficient for this purpose. Um, there's two acquisitions that are going to be needed, one would be a temporary construction easement. Which would give the city the authority to access the property, to do exploratory drilling, to determine if the property is viable for a well. Um, if the property, assuming the city could acquire that easement and do that work. And then determine that the property was viable, the city would then need to acquire the property. Um, in fee in order to, you know, to improve the property such that a well could be put on the property. As it is, there's, um, one undeveloped parcel suitable for this exploratory drilling. Um, the city's retained an expert, and the, the expert hydrologist that we have retained has recommended this particular parcel. We've been in discussions, we've, we've reached out and contacted the property owner, in fact, I believe, Ms. Gray, I haven't met her yet. They have an attorney, um, that we've been in discussions with, um. As, as long ago as, as early last summer, and we've had very amicable discussions, um. However.
So first step is we need to just put something on the property to see if this is even viable.
You need the right to be able to walk on the property, yes, but that, we don't know if it's viable. So the easement would determine that, we, we don't want to acquire an entire parcel.
So we need a license to go on, basically.
Uh, in ease.
Agreement.
A temporary easement, so. Discussions with the property or through their attorney, uh, like I said, they have counsel, and they've been very amicable, but, you know, we, we haven't reached agreement. Um, the property owners are justifiably concerned when. Oh, it's not always the most popular, I'm not the most popular guy in the room when I tell people that, hey, the city might be interested in your property. So that's, it's usually something that, uh, causes concern. And we are going to, I mean, I spoke with their attorney today, we're gonna continue, um, discussions and negotiations. We've had the property appraised, we've, we've made an offer, and we, we're gonna continue all of that, um, and. But time's becoming a be essence, and so the reason, um, I'm coming before you today is just, the foreshadowing is just to indicate that it may be. That, uh, we would present council, the full council, with an ordinance, um, requesting that the city. Council authorize, uh, an action in eminent domain. Do not know if that's going to occur, if that were to occur, that would be at a full council meeting, likely next month. Where there would be, we would provide a, a much fuller presentation, and of course, we would. Certainly answer any question, we can answer questions now, but the purpose now is to, is to. Make council aware that this is coming down the pipeline potentially. It seemed more appropriate to discuss this with the full council as opposed to going to utilities committee and. You know, it, it just would make, make more sense to perhaps address the, the council as a whole. Not all council members, it's not a common thing for, for Lacey to exercise its powers of eminent domain, it's been. And years since we last did it, in Congress, um, so council members haven't all been involved in that process. Um, it's, it's a very, it, it's all statutorily driven, the. The, the, the legislature has exercised, has given cities the authority to exercise those powers. Um, so it's a grant of statutory authority that gives the city the ability to do that. Um, and the RCWs that outline the eminent domain procedure are very specific about what the process is. And the very first step is for the city council, the legislative body, um, to adopt an ordinance. Which would describe the property, lay out the, the needs, and then direct the city attorney to. Initiate the proceedings with a petition in, in court for an eminent domain, so.
So the, I guess my first question is, is obviously, we've done some due diligence here. And this property looks like the, the most suitable property, are there any other properties in the vicinity? That could work, that we could reach out to, where maybe someone is a little more amicable about, about selling?
So. No, the, the, yes, there's other properties in the area, of course there are, it's a quarter-quarter section, um, and I. Well, how, how many acres is that? It, it's a couple acres, it's, it's, it's not that huge of an area. This is the only undeveloped parcel in that quarter-quarter section, um. The other parcels would require, it, it would require acquisition of a, of a home. Require relocation of residents, um. This has done a lot of due diligence on this, and again, I wanna emphasize that I am, we will, we would never ask council, we're not asking for any action tonight. Any, any time that we did come before council, we would, um. We, we would have a full presentation equipped with, like, show and everything, um, kind of outlining all, all of the questions that you just raised. Um, but, but city staff has done a lot of work on this, um, and our position. Or, or I think that this, the city staff's recommendation would be that, would be appropriate.
And, and the end results, this goes forward, what, what would be on that property, just a, a lift state, a, uh.
So well would be, yes.
Do we have a, a picture of a? Well, that would possibly look like?
It's a, I mean, I don't know if I have access to Google Maps here, but it's basically a small masonry building.
So like similar to what's?
Is there one at Woodland Creek, the park at Woodland Creek, is there a small lift station?
No, there's not, not on.
Cause this is gonna be a well.
It's a well, so, I'll just say. I'll let the council know that the, the property owner had a long time resident, and, and Ms. Gray, I, I believe they want to address the council, and. That's of course up the council, council doesn't usually hear public comment at work sections, but that, I would not have any objections to that. But it's a long time resident, um, the property owner is not in favor of the city. You know, just digging around on their property, it's completely undeveloped, it's wooded, it's, it's natural vegetation. Um, we've expressed to the property owners that if we have the ability to access the property, that we could work with them to. To do any necessary construction to minimize any impact to the greatest extent possible. You know, key words, to the extent possible, um, but it's, yeah, so it wouldn't be just a. Forestation and then, you know, the whole property is, is. Is improved with, you know, uh, public works type stuff.
And what the size of the, what's the size of this parcel that we're looking at? I don't have that right in front of me.
Point nine one acres.
Point nine one acres, what, yeah, so not quite. What is fair market value?
A new tab, you should be able to just.
The, uh. But the cities.
Just go up to the plus sign on the top. They should just let you search whatever.
So as part of this process, the cities, um, had the property appraised, and we've, by a certified. MIA appraiser, and we've had that appraisal reviewed by a review appraiser. Um, and their determination of just compensation for this parcel is a hundred and seventy thousand. There's, that, that's per in fee, and again, let me remind council that the first step for this, we would not be asking. To purchase the property, we would be asking for a temporary use of the property. That value is, um, fifty seven hundred.
I just opened up a view of what one of these wellhouses would look like.
Oh, that's.
So, these are wellhouses here, so it's that, that type of.
So they have one of those?
Yeah.
And so.
So this building right here holds, you know, like, or, uh, where we generate what's equivalent to chlorine. Um, so, yeah, they're very similar in size, both the building where we.
We've provided, um, the property owners through their attorney, um, just. Rough ideas, like a square on the property of like what the footprint would be. Um, of course, it's one of the things that we don't know is, you know. It's wooded, and so, you know, where exactly would be the best location for it without removing trees?
Is that, you know, true?
Certainly, that's not the end goal, I could see that here, but there's not a tree on it, so. The building is what we're looking at here, not the landscaped grass and pavement, okay? Um, you were talking about the.
I, I think it's clear, they purchased that property to preserve it, you know, um, so, I'm sure that's one of their concerns.
You're, you're talking about.
So.
Potential value of.
So the, the rate.
Can we look, call up the properties?
The appraisal was a hundred and seventy thousand. But after that, you went on to say that the, the, the value of. What we need to do. Construct easement, the first thing we need is the easement that was valued at five thousand seven hundred. But that doesn't account for damages that would be. So in addition to the five thousand seven hundred dollars, uh, would there in addition be compensation to the landowner, owner for, for allowing us to? So fifty seven hundred bucks. That's the value of the easement for the property, what is not included in that value is, um. Any damages incurred by the city's use of that property, so if they're, if they have to, um, damage landscaping. Natural vegetation, uh, remove a tree, there's value there.
Yeah.
Would certainly be determined and added to what the city would be required to pay as just compensation. And then, you know, part of a negotiation, and I've, we've had several conversations with, with, with their attorney about this. Um, is, you know, impacts to the property owners that might be. They're not suffering now, but you know, it's an action like this might have other incidental. Because compensation does not mean restoration. Correct. We would be obligated to restore the property to as near as practically, practically.
If we would, if we didn't use it.
But if. If there's, this is property that's natural in its state, so it's not realistic for the city to be able to. Replant maybe a big tree, right? So so that would be a monetary compensation. Sure.
So but would you like to address the council?
You can go, come on up.
So uh I'm Joey Gray and I'm. A little choked up because the last time I was in here was for my dad's retirement party as a council member. So thank you all for your public service. Um yes, I'm here representing my mom and my brother and I. Um we've grown up across the street from that property. And um as I stated in my public comment that I submitted before four o'clock today. Um we're eager to uh find a a solution that protects both mom and the city's interests. So. Again, I, our attorney, we've designated our attorney to to work with you and will. Continue to do that. My mother is eighty two years old. As like most seniors, and I know there's a lot here in Lacey, um people do slow down and we would just like. I like I said here, appreciate accommodations for her age. As we um figure out a win win solution.
So do we have any idea of what timeframe? I know you said like you start figuring this out. What mean, how late can we go?
Well, that's, so my, when we first started talking about timelines, this was when the project first started being discussed last summer. The hope, and of course, you know, the city's hope was that we would be able to access the property by about now. To begin determining viability that exploratory drilling would be completed in March of twenty twenty three. Um that if viable. The um production of the well would begin in twenty twenty four through maybe. You know, twenty five, twenty six, which would allow us, cause again, what what's the pro, what we need to do, what the city needs to do is perfect its water rights. We need to get more water. That would allow us to meet, to perfect the water rights by twenty twenty nine, which is the, that's when it needs to happen. So that, looking back from that is what's making this more. I think Peter mentioned that Attorney Dave's been trying to get property in that stormwater front. For that project for, it's been a couple of years, but that's not an imminent thing in that property owner, it was a church. They haven't been eager and they. But there hasn't, there's not a.
We have a TikTok on this, yeah, okay.
And so that's kind of, certainly Scott, or any public works person would be able to.
Yeah, so just to. Repeat the picture. You know, it's the resident expert on this, but you have a well as your point of withdrawal. Uh where you're permitted to draw from. You've got a quarter quarter section around that well, which is eighty acres. That you uh can't leave. If you leave that, it's like trying to get a brand new water right. And you all are experienced to know. What that takes. So that's not really an option. This is the only. Vacant lot in that quarter quarter section. So um. Anyway, uh you know, I might fully understand where you're turning from, but.
Is is the concern? Um I know you don't want to speak for your mom. Is the concern about anything going there? Or is the concern more about price? Or is the?
If I could have our attorney answer that question, I I don't want to speak here. She's actually. It just takes her some time to absorb information, but she's actually kind of intrigued. I'll leave it at that.
Do you want, I mean, do you mind if I answer that question from my perspective, based on what I've been? So I mean.
Well. Unintended, sorry.
Well, I'm trying to see to meet the concern. Is it the concern, like, we don't want here ever, no matter what the price is, or is it more of a like a? That doesn't.
Not at all.
Okay.
I would say that um we're completely engaged and we just wanna be very collaborative and. Uh meet all the requirements of both parties.
Okay. Is there any other question?
Just, it sounds like the attorneys are in conversation. When's the next time that council might get an update on this?
The next time council would. The next time I would come before council at a meeting would be with uh proposed ordinance. That.
But we might not get there.
If, that's right, that's right. And it's hard.
Cause there's so many movement. Do the work and.
The city can't afford, city can't afford to. Not start taking these steps because if if. And and we were negotiating in good faith and I do believe that we're gonna get there. But if we don't, and then we're starting this process, maybe I've. Asking myself, maybe I should have talked to council a while ago. And so it's it's just kind of.
There's a chance that we'll do the monitor on there and we'll monitor and there's not enough. And then we're gonna have to start finding, it's really more expensive.
And that's, that's another reason. Time is of the essence, cause if it doesn't bear fruit. We need to have time to figure out what other options there is.
I I would say that a month is a is a bit quick. So two months would be better than one month. To for us, for our family to. Fully engage.
Is there any other questions?
Just a clarification. Was it point nine acres? Is that what it was? Point four nine.
Oh, point four nine.
It's point nine one acres.
It's large. It's the largest lot.
Yeah, cause you gotta think.
I heard both, that's why I heard a half acre.
Requirements now is like you need space on either side of the well that. So you need a larger.
Well, that's the thing. If you have a. Yeah, if you drill a well here, for example, it's gonna impact. So there's a lot that goes into it. There's a lot that would be.
Well, with that, uh the discussion. Restored end of our agenda, objection.